Okay. Are we on?
We are on.
All right. Good evening. Open the Thursday, April 16th, 2020 Jefferson County Commission meeting. I call it to order. And I do ask for everyone's patience. We're using, we're trying, what, our third virtual platform to conduct these meetings. So it's a learning curve for us all. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, not requiring anyone to stand that's sitting in front of their computer, but if you will join us. Patsy, would you lead us, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic.
For which.
Where this stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
For all.
Oh, okay. That's a little challenging there with the lag in the voices. I do believe we are going to try, try to do some public comment. So Stephanie Grove, our county administrator, will you explain the process?
Sure. When we get to the time for public comment, there is a raise your hand function. So at the time that we're to public comment on the agenda, I would ask those who want to make public comments to raise your hand, and then I can unmute you in order, and you'll be able to do public comment. You're limited to same rules, limited to three minutes. But we're going to try to offer this up so that people who want to make public comment like they would during the regular meeting will be able to do so. Just, just hang tight with us as we try to figure it out. But one of the reasons we chose this format is because it would allow for public comment. So at that time, you'll see a kind of a raise hand function, raise your hand, and I'll hopefully be able to see that and unmute you. And have you give your public comment.
Okay. Is there any discussion or update that you want to go over, Stephanie, right now about COVID-19?
Um, I think it can wait until my reports. I know that Nathan has some things to talk about, and I do as well, but I don't think there's anything pressing that we need to do right at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay. I'll move on to approvals. Approval of requisition for April 16th, 2020.
I'll move, we approve requisitions for April 16th, 2020 in the amount of $7,205.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the requisitions for April 16th, 2020. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I believe that was unanimous. I didn't hear everybody's voice, but I didn't hear any nay, so that's the way I'm going with it. We'll move on to approval of accounts payable for April 9th.
I'll move approval of accounts payable for April the 9th in the amount of $194,887.66.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve counts payable April 9th, 2020. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. April 16th, accounts payable.
Go ahead. All right, I'll move approval of accounts payable for April 16th in the amount of $213,287.29.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, approved counts payable April 16th, 2020. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to manual checks for April 10th, 2020. And I'll move approval of manual checks in the total amount $363,688.37.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Motion is to approve manual checks for April 10th, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Manual checks for April 17th, 2020.
I move, we approve manual checks for April 17th, 2020 in the amount of $603.96.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to prove manual checks, April 17th, 2020. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Payroll for April 2nd, 2020.
I'll move approval of payroll for April 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $266,595.1.
Second.
It moved in second and proved payroll April 2nd, 2020. Questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we are down to public comment. Stephanie?
So if you are a member of the public and you're interested in making public comments, and we, I will, we did have a few people submit written comments, and I will read those, but if you're interested in making public comments, please use the raise your hand function. It looks like we have about 17 attendees. If there's anyone who would like to make public comment, please use the raise your hand function, and we will try to do that now. Okay. All right, it looks like we have Catherine Jawswick, who wants to make public comments. So Catherine, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. And you also, you need to unmute yourself as well, Ms. Jawswick. There we go.
Stephanie, if you received my comments, then I don't actually need to talk if you're actually going to read the comment. I didn't know if you actually received it.
I can read it, or you can say it. It's up, it's up to you.
I just wanted to urge the commission to support the proposal by the Jefferson Water Advisory Committee on the USGS groundwater survey. I think that, given the record recent rainfalls that are likely to continue, as well as new industrial activity in the county, there is a potential for the quality of our groundwater to change over time. And I think that this USGS survey is a gold standard mechanism for assessing the quality of our groundwater. So I would encourage the commission to assist the Water Advisory Committee in any way possible to have this study conducted by the USGS. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Steph.
That, I think, is the only person I see who wanted to make, that's the only hand raised that I see. Let me just scroll down here and make sure that I hit all the attendees. Okay, and we had one other public comments. Did you want me to go ahead and read?
I suppose you better, yes.
Um, this is from David Tab. Hi, David Tab, lifelong resident and taxpayer, request reimbursement of the property taxes that Shenandoah Sales and Service has paid to the county of Jefferson, West, Jefferson, West Virginia. I also request a pilot agreement or a bond as the Jefferson County Commission is still offering through the Jefferson County Development Authority. The Jefferson County, wait, I think I, I think I have the wrong, the wrong public comment from him, maybe. Sorry. Shoot. That was the public comment from the last meeting. And I need to find the other one. I'm sorry, I printed it out, but I printed out the wrong one. So if you want to go ahead and, and do something else while I look for his, sorry about that.
I was going to suggest that, so, all right. We'll come back to that. Remind me if I forget. I don't know if our next scheduled appointment, and we're running early, but that's okay, if she's available, is Lynn Fields. Available from the probate office?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes. I see what our business is, and I'm going to make the motion that we convene as a fiduciary review board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we convene as a fiduciary review board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Lynn, go ahead.
Good afternoon. We are presenting to you our quarterly review, which is a list of accountings and waivers that have met all of the deadlines of the probate office and are up for closure. And then also a list of wills and estates that have been opened since the last quarterly review.
Okay, now normally we review the documents. What is your suggestion for this evening?
So Jane, go ahead. Go ahead, Lynn, you, you go ahead.
I had sent Stephanie a list of them. There were only, I think, maybe seven or eight this time. I'd sent Stephanie a list of them, and I'm not sure, I think she said she was going to put them up somewhere so you all could see.
I am going to put them up. I'm going to share my screen. Here. Which I have done before.
I moved it over to you, Stephanie, so hold on one moment.
All right, there it is. Can you guys see that? It says. Okay. So I'm just going to scroll down so you can see them. And you tell me if I'm going too fast, or if you want me to stop so you can see something.
Stephanie, I'm hearing something in the background talking about testing and so forth.
Yeah, I think that someone, it may be listening to a newscast or something, and they're not muted.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, got it.
Is this working for everyone? Can everyone see this?
Yes, I can.
Yes, it's fine. All right, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
So I, I'll make the motion that we approve the estates that have been closed.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the estates that have been closed. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have this petition. Lynn, Lynn, would you like to explain that to us?
Sure. We had before you a petition that had actually been before you, once before, for the removal of the administrator on the Krista Watson estate. Initially, when I made the agenda request, we were leaning towards having the administrator removed. However, last week and this week, some new information has come to light, and we realized that at the last meeting, you referred this to Frank Hill and, for mediation, and he was never able to hold a hearing, a proper hearing on this. So we're asking at this time if you would refer it back to him to schedule a hearing to try to mediate this without having Mr. Bonaparte removed.
What would you think would be a reasonable amount of time? I mean, I think this, this matter has drug on, and I don't know what the problem is, and I don't really need to know, but the details. But what would you suggest as a reasonable amount of time for this to be accomplished?
I'm unsure, because with, you know, the travel restrictions and the, you know, the meeting restrictions that are in place now, I, I don't know that it can be accomplished until after some of these. So maybe not until maybe the end of, of next month, so.
Okay.
So it appears that the request is to have the sheriff appointed as a personal representative of the estate?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion. I, I see on here in the letter that the sheriff has agreed that he would do it. So is that the proper form, Nathan?
Commissioner Nolan, I, I think that what Lynn is saying, that instead of moving the sheriff in, that we would ask Frank Hill to mediate it. Is that right, Lynn, or do you want both of these things to happen?
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, so that's fine with me.
So, I mean, I think it was sufficiently noticed. Certainly, anyone who has an interest in this estate would have the notice to appear here today or dial into this meeting, so. So Lynn, as I understand it, what you're asking is to have Frank Hill review this and act as a fiduciary commissioner, and then report back to the commission by the end of next month, if that's possible.
I'm sorry, he's already been appointed as the fiduciary commissioner, but he hasn't been able to act. He hasn't held a hearing, so we wanted to give, give him time to, to listen to, to everyone involved and, and then come to a conclusion after that.
Okay.
Okay, if he's willing to do that, I don't have a problem with that at all. I just.
He absolutely is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, do we need to make a motion to that effect, or is that, we've already, the process is already ongoing?
Correct. I'm not sure, Nathan maybe would know more so as far as if there needs to be a motion to, to send it back to, to Frank Hill for mediation.
As I recall, Lynn, the last time that you were before the commission, that was the directive, correct?
Yes, it was, correct.
So I don't, I don't think it was through Frank Hill's fault, but just through issues, there was.
Yes.
He was unable to meet. So I, I think you're, you're still in the, in the, you know, in the mode of where you've directed him to do this, so I think you're fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to, no action is necessary from the commission, correct?
I think that's right.
All right. Everybody okay with that? No action?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Caleb, Josh, Ralph, you okay?
I'm okay, Ralph.
All right. All right. Okay, thank you very much, Lynn.
Thanks.
We will move on to Michelle Gordon. Finance Director.
Hello.
Good evening.
Let me see if I can. All right, so the first thing that I have on the agenda is renewal of our WV Core Insurance for fiscal year '21. The renewal contract for the county's WV Core Self-Insurance Renewal for Liability, Property, Automobile, Volunteer in Accident, and Sickness in Line of Duty Act for, and workers' compensation for fiscal year '21 includes a 4.7% increase, or $15,141. I'm sorry, that's what we included in the budget. And we included in the budget a 5% increase, or $6,038, for workers' compensation based on historical trends. Renewal that we actually receive for liability insurance was $324,922, and it's actually 3.3% less than what I had originally projected in the fiscal year '21 budget. The renewal will result in a savings of $11,004 for fiscal year '21 for our, for that line item. The fiscal year '21 budgeted payroll of $10.9 million increased by $203,000 over fiscal year '20's actual payroll of $10.7 million. So the county workers, in addition to that, the county's workers' comp experience rating decreased from .83 to .80 in fiscal year '21. Because total payroll is flat and the county's workers' comp experience rating has decreased to 8.8, 3.9% increase was received for the county's workers' comp premium renewal, instead of what I had originally budgeted, which was a 5% increase. The renewal rate for workers' comp is $125,293, and is about $1,200, or 1% less than what I had originally estimated. Overall, total risk and workers' compensation insurance increased by 2%, or $8,178, from fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '21. As a result, net savings, $12,300 should be realized in fiscal year '21. The workers' compensation premium is normally adjusted each year when our insurance provider audits our county annual covered payroll. And because the budget includes a 100% of our payroll, does not allow for any savings related to employee turnover. So the county typically receives a, a small refund every year of our workers' compensation premiums once that audit's completed. So I would anticipate that our savings in fiscal year '21 with this renewal, and based on the budget that I had originally projected, will be about $13,000 to $14,000. Do you have any questions about our workers', our WV Core Insurance Renewal?
It's good to be.
Yeah. Always nice to see that we're ahead of the ballgame at the moment with all the unexpected expenses that we're dealing with right now. So I, I make the motion that we approve the West Virginia Core, Corp. Insurance Renewal for 2021.
Second.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Well, let me restate that. A motion to accept the fiscal year '21 Risk and Workers' Compensation Plan renewal for West Virginia Core Risk Pool. So basically the same thing, a little more detail. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Michelle.
Okay, the next item that I have is review and approval of our Highmark Medical Insurance Renewal for fiscal year '21. Our fiscal year '21 Highmark Medical Insurance Renewal includes, I included one option for you to review. During the budget process, the county's insurance representative originally advised us that our monthly premium for current health insurance plan would include 5% to 8%. I included $100,000 in the budget to cover a portion of this increase. Before we go on to the actual renewal, I wanted to talk a little bit about the employee portion of the insurance premium. The last increase to the employee portion of the county's insurance premium was actually done in fiscal year '18, and it was effective July 1st, 2017. A comparison of insurance premiums paid by the employee and employer was prepared, and I looked at surrounding jurisdictions. So I looked at the city of Frederick, Loudoun County Public Schools, the city of Hagerstown, Washington County Public Schools, and West Virginia PIA. Just looked at their premiums that they're paying. And I included a chart on the actual paperwork, so does everybody have a copy of that, that they're looking, that they can look at?
Yes.
So right now, on the employee-only portion, county employees pay $40 monthly, and the employee, employer, the county pays $804 of the $844 premium. So right now, the county pays 95.3% for employee-only. For employee plus one, the county pays 82.2%, and for family, the county pays 78.8%. Now, when I looked at other jurisdictions, I could see that the city of Frederick, they are a straight 25% across the board. All of their employees pay 25% of their premiums, whether it's employee, employee-only, employee plus one, or family. For Loudoun County Public Schools, it looks like the employee only pays 15%, still significantly higher than our 4.7% that we're currently asking our employees to pay for employee-only. And then once you get into family, the percentage increases to 26% and 29%. Um, and then once you get into family, the, uh, percentage increases to 26% and 29% for employee plus one and family. Uh, for the City of Hagerstown, I did not receive a response back from them, so I'm not sure what their employer portions are, but I did include the employee portion so that we could do, at least have a comparison of what employees are paying in other jurisdictions. Now, for Washington County Public Schools, for the employee only, the employee pays almost 19% of the premium, which is $192 compared to our, uh, $40 that we currently charge our employees who have employee only. Now, for employee plus one, employees pay almost 19%, and same for family, they pay almost 19%. Um, and then for PEIA, which is what the majority of the jurisdictions that I found in West Virginia, um, actually use, uh, PEIA actually has tiers based on the, uh, annual income for employees. I didn't include their entire, um, chart, I only included some of the tiers, so I only included the lowest tier, um, and the next lowest tier, and then I included, um, one tier that shows what the average salary is for employees as well as their highest tier. So if we look at their lowest tier, which would be what our, um, employees in our lowest, um, pay bracket are paying, for PEIA, for their lowest plan, which really doesn't cover much of anything, um, employees are still paying $50 monthly compared to our $40 monthly. Um, and then for a comparable plan, their employees are paying $115 monthly. For, um, employee plus one and family, they're paying 20% and 25% respectively, uh, for their comparable plans. Now, the next tier level, which would be employees making $35,000 to $40,000, um, that premium for employee only increases to $122 or 28%. Um, and then it increases to, I think my percentages are wrong there, uh, $245 um, for employee plus one and $307 for our family, or 27%. Now, the average annual salary of county employees is $50,968. So when I looked at the tier that includes that salary range, employee only, uh, for the lowest level plan, they pay $61 monthly or $143 monthly for a comparable plan, which is comparable to what the county offers, and that's compared to our $40 that we're currently asking our employees to pay. Um, that increases to $307 and $387 for employee plus one and, and family. So when I took the average of those plans for employee, for the employee percentage and the employer percentage, I, um, that very last row there, highlighted in gray, shows you what the average employee portion is. So the average is 20.7% uh, for employee, um, that the employee should pay versus 79.3% that the employer should pay, and it's pretty consistent, um, once you go through all three levels, employee only, employee plus one, and, and family, so it's about, you know, 20 to 23%. Um, and then 78 or 76 to, to 80% is what the employer should pay. So in comparison, the county is paying a much higher portion of the insurance premium than that of the surrounding government offices. Um, the largest disparity exists for the employee-only coverage. Right now, as I mentioned, the county is paying 95.3% of the premium, whereas the average for other governments is only 79.3%. As part of the analysis, um, um, let's see, if we go to the second page, um, what I did was I kind of determined what the employee portion would be if we corrected that to that average. So if we use the average of 20.7% in our current, um, premium renewal for fiscal year 21, the employee-only portion should actually increase from $40 a month to $180 a month. Employee plus one would be $383, and then family should increase to $520. Now, I'm not recommending that we immediately increase it to, to those averages, but I would recommend that we do phase it in over a period of nine or 10 years so that we can, um, make the employee and employer portion a little more consistent with what our counterparts in surrounding jurisdictions are actually charging. So for fiscal year 21, what I would recommend that we do would be to fa- phase it in and increase the employee-only portion from that 4.7% to 8.5%, still a very low number compared to what other jurisdictions are doing, but it would increase it from $40 to $70, $74 a month. Um, the employee plus one portion would increase to $334, and then the family portion would increase to $458.
Yeah.
And the current premium being paid by employee plus one is $300. The current premium being paid by employees who have family coverage is $447. Do I have any questions about any of those renewals, or any of that, uh, before I go on into total cost? Okay, um, the renewal option that they provided us with, um, is our current plan as is it, it exists now with absolutely no changes. Um, we did receive a 3.25% increase instead of the 5 to 8% that they were originally projecting. So the estimated cost of the renewal option is $81,000 total. Uh, with the adjustments that I have recommended above for fiscal year 21, the county would absorb 54,800 of that 81,000, and employees would absorb, or would absorb 26,200 of that increase. Um, as you know, that employees are actually receiving, uh, consistent COLAs and merit increases, and they have been receiving those for the last few years. One other option that the insurance provider did ask me to convey to you, not recommending that we do this either, but I did want to, you know, give you this information, they asked that we consider this spousal rule provision. They said that with this, um, provision, we could potentially save in addition to $150,000 to $200,000 a year, if we implemented the spousal rule provision. And basically, what this means is that employees would need to confirm the employment status of their spouse. If their spouse is employed, they must confirm whether or not the, um, employer of their spouse actually offers medical insurance. If medical insurance is offered by their employer, they must confirm if the spouse is eligible for that coverage under the employer's pan- plan, and then finally, if an employee indicates that their spouse's employer offers medical insurance, that the employee, employee spouse is eligible, then their spouse is not eligible for primary insurance coverage under the county's plan. And I provided you with the information that they, um, sent us with that, for that. And then on page three, our Delta Dental, um, plan, they are offering no increase to our current rate with a two-year rate guarantee through fiscal year 22, so our plan would expire on June 30th, 2022. The total annual employer expense for fiscal year 21 is estimated to be $49,600, and that is included in the approved budget. I do recommend that we renew this contract with, um, the two-year rate guarantee. And then just, just for information purposes, Hartford Group Life is currently under a two-year contract with a rate guarantee through the end of fiscal year 21. We do have $29,900 included for covered employees and actions actually needed for our life insurance. Um, and then the last, uh, piece for information only is our NVA Vision Plan, National Administrator. Um, that is currently under a four-year contract with a four-year rate guarantee, um, and our rate is good through fiscal year 23. And that means the county will pay the same rate for Vision for the last eight years. The total annual employer expense for fiscal year 21 for Vision is $14,600. It's included in the, um, the approved budget, and no action is needed for Vision. Do I have any question or comment?
I mean, I have one comment, Michelle, this is Commissioner Compton. I, uh, just looking at your spreadsheet, the comparison rates across the area, I mean, it's clear that we need some sort of increase. I agree with, uh, Michelle that it needs to be staggered through the years. You can't just jump up that high of a percentage in a small amount of time. That's not fair to the employees. I mean, I, I tend to accept her recommendation for how we should restructure the premiums.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that, Josh, um, about the health insurance, um, what, the employee portion and so forth, but I, I just think right now with all that's going on, I'm not comfortable going on with, uh, this spousal rule provision. I, I just think there's too much uncertain, uncertainty right now, and I'm really not in favor of it, but just, especially at this time, there's just too many balls in the air. A lot of people just don't know what's gonna, gonna be happening for their work and all, probably also their insurance, so.
Yeah, this is Patsy, and I, I would agree with that, too. I think, um, I think if we're, and I, I know we have to, we have to do something about the insurance. It's a, it's a great plan, and the county has provided, uh, a lot of, uh, a, a lot of this for, for our employees, but I, I, I too think that because of the, um, the current day, I think the, I know at some time we'll probably have to do it, but right now, I would rather put off this spousal rule provision, uh, maybe to, to look at that another time, another year.
I agree with, this is Ralph. I was gonna say that probably in about two and a half months, we're gonna have to look at the whole budget all over again, because once this whole thing's biased, and I'm not saying put everything off, but I think at that point, we're gonna have to look at top to bottom, the whole budget, including health insurance at that point.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna make, uh, a motion to accept the Highmark of West Virginia Health Insurance Renewal and to implement the first year of the option for renewal. Everybody understand what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would increase the employees' por- portion, uh, somewhat. Do you have a sec?
Yeah, to 8.5%. I'll second that.
Okay. Is any more discussion?
Uh, Commissioner Tab, one last thing. Uh, Michelle, is there any way you could get us a comparison of what surrounding jurisdictions have that spousal thing in effect?
Um, I can check, yes.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, that'd be a good piece of information to have.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to accept Highmark of West Virginia Health Insurance Renewal, uh, with option one. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's see, and then, um, what's the other thing? Oh.
The dental.
Yeah, someone wanna make a motion on that?
Yeah, I move we accept the two-year dental plan renewal from Delta Dental.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? The motion is to accept the two-year dental plan renewal for Delta Dental. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, thank you, Michelle. Is anything else we need to know?
Thank you.
Okay.
Nope, that's it, and later.
Alrighty.
Michelle.
Commissioner Tab, I do have, Mr. Tab's correct public comment for this meeting. Thank you, Nathan, Sandy, and Caleb, who all sent it. So if you want me, if you want me to read it now, I can.
Might as well.
Alright, I, David Tab, a lifelong resident taxpayer, protests the Jefferson County Commission hindering resident taxpayers from the recorded public comment. The JCC has yet to respond to my March 16th, 2024 request of the 12 architects submitted RFQ. This was a bid process. Once opened, the bids become public information. Imagine how many things the JCC, Jefferson County Administrator, Jefferson County Prosecuting Attorney, and the court system have done behind the Jefferson County residents' taxpayers' back. Yes, it's millions. The Jefferson County School Board is no better. There has, there has been millions of dollars of food gone to waste across the nation. The Jefferson County School Board started out with good intentions, now over a month of no food distributions. Some families were called on Monday, April 13th, 2020, so they could pick up food on April 14th, 2020 at the school. This was a limited variety of items. Keep in mind, the school budget is over $120 million per year. The businesses pay double, and the property owners have already paid for the food and services needed to educate, feed, and monitor the needs of our youngest population. The JCC will say they have nothing to do with the schools, but that's wrong. The JCC allowed a special election for excess levy within the ballot that states if any money is received, even if unconstitutional, the school board can keep it. Over the last five years, the school board received an additional $10 million over the ballot request. The JCC is to assist with the residents' needs, including the youth of this county. Within the April 16th, 2020 meeting agenda under new business, item six, revised 2020 holiday schedule, the JCC is apparently going to update their holiday schedule. Local holidays scheduled include a tax-free month for business owners and those who do not get scheduled holiday paid. The next agenda item is the letter to the governor concerning reimbursement of COVID-19. Really? The JC, the JCC has already been paid by the taxpayer. The taxpayer is the one who needs reimbursement. The JCC wasted millions on their pet projects instead of being prepared. It's past time to call out the elected officials for not being prepared for any type of emergency situation. The volunteers are the only ones who we can count on. It's not our local government. Maybe at a time in history, the volunteers should be put in charge instead of our elected officials. The JCC has done nothing to help. So you know, I did ask and answer, I did ask, and the answer was, that's not our job. Wow. The election will come at some point. Ask the candidates and election officials, what is your job? Thanks to the volunteers. Do what you can for others and hold the government accountable. Stay safe and have a nice day.
Okay, thank you. And we have no others that were emailed in that you know of?
No ma'am.
Okay. Alright, um, I'm just gonna move right along if Mary Sel is available.
I do not see Mary Sel on here right now.
Okay, well, um, and everything else, we would be early on. Hmm, oh, we could go down and talk about the revised holiday schedule, number six.
So this is due to the change in the election.
Right.
The, the code itself says that there will be a holiday whenever there's a primary or general election. It doesn't name the date. But when we do our holiday schedule, we actually put the date in there, so right now, the date is May 12th. And so we need, we need to change it for the, to reflect the change in the primary election, which would make it June 9th.
Right.
That's right. So it would be taking away May 12th, but providing June 9th as a paid holiday, and that is consistent with the state code. And I watched Governor Justice's press conference today, and he mentioned that in his press conferences as well today.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't think you need a motion for that. It's just, uh, or, or we do have to approve the new holiday schedule.
You have to approve the, the, the removal of May 12th and the addition of June 9th.
Alright, I'll move that we approve the new holiday schedule with the, um, with the removal of May 12th and the addition of June 9th for primary election day.
Second.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. Do we have any questions, discussion? All those in favor of the motion that re- revises the 2020 holiday schedule, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, let's see. I'm just down here under county administrator reports until hopefully Mary Sel checks in. Uh, do you have something, Stephanie?
Sure, um, so just the review of the COVID-19-related policies, I don't think that those will have changed at the point. Um, we met on eighth to approve the recent update of policies, um, and I went and kind of polished tho- those off after we met. I did include, um, in the policy that employees who are, um, working a reduced schedule but getting paid are required to follow the social distancing and shelter-in-place order. And, um, I prohibited them from, uh, from working a second job while they're getting administrative leave with, so, um, and that is something that we did not discuss, but I thought it was consistent with the spirit of the policy that we had discussed before. Uh, you know, this is, we're, we're trying to keep people at home, but it's not, it's not meant to be a vacation. It's, it's meant to. Uh, you know, this is we're trying to keep people whole, but it's not. It's not meant to be a vacation. It's it's meant to to keep people safe. So other than that, I don't have any policy updates on our end. Um, I did go ahead and tell people that they could uh, that the boards could meet, just like we're meeting now, using, you know, something, a remote meeting or a virtual meeting. Um, and I think several boards are starting to do that. Um, and then the letter, well, yeah, the letter to the governor, several counties are sending letters to the governor concerning the reimbursement from the stimulus. And then NACO has sent a letter to representatives and senators in the in the House and Senate to say that they need to pass a stimulus package specifically for counties. As I told you before, when we were talking about those policies, we are left with an unfunded mandate to provide additional leave, whereas other employees are getting reimbursed for that. So NACO mentioned that and a whole host of other things. So I didn't know if you wanted me to prepare a similar letter piggybacking on those letters, um, one of which would be a letter to the governor explaining that, you know, we wanted, you know, we want to be included and we're going to need reimbursement for not only lost revenue, but expenses that we're incurring as a result of the COVID-19. He did say during his press conference that they've received half of the money today from the federal government, so we're slated to get at least 1.25 billion, and we got half of that wired into apparently the bank account, according to what he said, to the state's bank account. According to that during the press conference today. So I put it on there because I know other counties are sending that letter and there's kind of been a concerted effort amongst the the groups that represent counties to ask that every county commission send a letter to the governor, kind of saying, hey, don't forget about us and, you know, we we really need to make sure that our expenses are taken into account.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We don't want to let be left out. We don't want them to forget us and I think a letter would help, maybe.
Yeah. And I don't know if you can come up with a wild guesstimate or just say, you know, to this point, we feel like, uh, you know, this is the amount we would need to be reimbursed. Of course, we don't know how much longer we will still be in this situation. I don't know if we have anything close to what those numbers would be, but I know Michelle is on top of it.
She, I had a conference call that I attended with the Attorney General, and at the same time, the auditor held a conference as well. And I had Michelle attend that meeting because I thought she would be the better one to attend. And they discussed how to track those expenses, what would be eligible for reimbursement. So Michelle is keeping track of that and and looking at, you know, what we might be losing in way of the casino for the casino being shut down and what we're expending related to the pandemic. Um, and she continues to, you know, with our new payroll system, we're able to track who's taking admin leave with pay, um, and how much we're spending on that. And then once we switch it, when we switch over to the COVID sick, we'll be able to see who's taking that as well. So we have those numbers and Michelle is tracking them.
Okay, is there a general agreement that we should have the county administrator send a letter to the governor expressing our concerns about COVID-19 expenditures and losses?
It's okay with me.
Alright. So let the record. Go ahead, Josh.
I said fine by me.
Okay, alright. Well, let the record show there's consensus that our county administrator send a letter to the governor concerning reimbursement of COVID-19 expenditures and losses. Alrighty.
Mary Sell has joined.
Okay. Well. Uh, Stephanie, how long do you think this next item will take? The hero pay? Or should we go back?
You can go back or you can take Mary Sell. It's up to you. It's maybe five minutes?
Okay, well, it is seven o'clock and Mary's on for seven, so let's go back to that. Don't let me forget it. I won't forget that item. Alright, we are back to item number three. Uh, Mary Sell with the Jefferson County Water Advisory Committee. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I was having a bit of technical technological difficulty earlier, but I appreciate your leadership during this unprecedented time and thank you for taking time to speak to me in between the important funding and the heroes pay. I, we brought this before you, before the unprecedented events. We have a proposal from the United States Geological Service to do a county wide, county-wide water quality assessment. It's outside the Chesapeake Bay funding requirement. We are not asking for funding at this time. We were asking for support and we aren't vetting it. We were starting to vet it. I as a tool for the county commission to planning commission, Jefferson County Development Authority, environmentalists, landowners, planners, census data to look at the county countywide on some legacy issues in the county. It was a three. It's a three-year study by USGS. We have separated out the LIDAR study. I think for those who had watched or seen Mark Kozar, he presented at a water quality rural agriculture development, rural agriculture defenders in the fall. But he also, on the proposal, you'll see on the last page, he he proposed a, he completed a study in 1991 that's very well been received in the county and utilized. The major components of the study is to put a grid in in the county and to assess water well quality and come up with a a study similar to the 1991 findings. And again, this is some of the, it's different, some of the legacy in our county. Uh, it's a three-year study, year over year, the USGS. It would be a public. Most of the costs are associated with the the lab work, which is done by USGS out in Colorado. It would, however, the tests and samples would be taken by our local Lee Town Science Center. And so I put it before the county commission, knowing that when we proposed this initially and uh, today, there's been a lot of changes in our our outreach for funding, including DNR, DEP, uh, source water utilities, public service districts. And I would welcome your feedback, knowing that we are in some very challenging and unprecedented times. But it's might be a very good tool when we can all raise our heads from what we're currently dealing with. So with that, I'll I'll ask for any questions. Uh, and again, we're not asking for funding right now. We're asking for support and suggestions for funding and where this the county might find this useful. And I'll I'll go on mute.
Uh, Mary, this is Patsy Nolan, and um, so at what point do you think, I I see that the counties matches, uh, looks like 367,000 267,000. I'm not sure if I said three or two, but at any rate, do you have any idea at what point? You would need that funding? I I think it's a very valuable tool, and I think it's something I would like to see it happen, but I'm not sure at what point we would be able to provide that kind of funding.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Nolan. Um, we we originally got a proposal from Mark Kozar for 90 sites and we thought it was it was it was higher and we suggested that the uh, what could he do with lesser sites and what? So we came down to 60 sites. We, when we got the proposal, it was right on top of when the county budget was already in motion. So we would not come before the county until the next budget cycle is what we thought we would do. And we would try to get Region 9. We would try to get a number of partners to be involved. So it can start, it was not going to start before October 2020. So with that place marked, it could start in February or March of 2021. So it could go on the next funding cycle and maybe the county would, well, the county certainly will will know more where it's where it stands for funding ability and um, I think it'd be very valuable. So I really appreciate your your support. Um, we had not put it forward this year unless the county commissioners thought it was valuable for us to ask for money this year.
I just want to, I just want to.
So it's not 257,000 this year. It's three years. So it's spread over three years. So it's a three-year commitment.
Okay.
That makes sense. Okay?
Okay, that helps. Thank you. Just curious. And and do you know? Have you talked to Bill Clark about this with Region 9 yet? Do you think there could be any funding from any other source?
We have talked to several sources. I've not gone to Bill Clark yet, but that is certainly a source we'd like to go to. We'd like to go with the county blessing.
Yeah.
So I, it's a chicken or egg. If I could start with the county saying they wanted me to go to Bill Clark, then that would help me go to Bill Clark.
Yeah, yeah, I see your point and I absolutely support this initiative. Uh, don't know where the money will come from at this point, but I do think it's something that needs to be done. It's been 30 years since we've had one and certainly our landscape has changed in many ways and last couple of years, the changing weather patterns has created challenges, too. So as far as water quality and nuisance holes and all that good stuff. So, um, I, you know, I am very comfortable, uh, actually enthusiastically supporting this initiative. Just the stumbling block will be in the future is trying to come up with some money, but until we have a clearer picture, I can't commit to any funding at this point, but like I said, this is something that is, I believe, needed and is timely. Uh, we we can't make good decisions with old data.
Thank you, President Tab. And there is also a separate study, which I haven't put before you, which would be a LIDAR sinkhole study that was 60,000. And we are, we're working on that in the background, but I really appreciate your support. I think it would be very useful for the county for its planning. And uh, it's been 30 years and there's been, uh, there's a lot of interest from the USGS and a lot of parties to do the study, so, which is, um, thank you.
Any other comments from fellow commissioners?
I would just make, this is Ralph, I'll just make a comment that it probably helps us eventually with the Chesapeake Bay studies and stuff and hopefully it'll show that we're in compliance and give us a good argument there. I I think it is a good, it's a good project and I hope we do find some money, but you know, we'll have to see how that goes.
Mary, this is Josh. Yeah.
Alright, Josh, were you trying to speak?
I was just gonna say, I mean, I would support this. I think it's very much needed and I'll echo my fellow colleagues on the commission's comments. I just, I too have concerns about the costs. We have a lot of stuff we need to fund and there never seems to be enough money to fund all the stuff, so if we can find the money, I think it's a great idea.
I would like to make a motion to just say that we support support the initiative and we'll just have to let the money issue work itself out as much as is possible in the future, but I think uh, if Mary is going to go or the Water Advisory Committee go to other possible funding partners, they need to know that the county commission supports the initiative. So I'm I'm gonna make the motion that the Jefferson County Commission supports the Water Advisory's request for a groundwater quality assessment of Jefferson County, West Virginia.
I'll second the motion.
Alright. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Nay, no, opposed? Anyone opposed? Okay, there you have it, Mary, and you understand that we're not committing to funding, but we certainly support uh, the initiative to have the assessment done.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the leadership of my fellow members, Oscar Stein, Jim Cummings, Bob Denton, Kirsten Cook, Nancy Lutz, who were really informative in pushing the study, bringing it before the county commission before the Water Advisor Committee and working with Mark Kozar. So this is a team effort and I appreciate you all being I appreciate the county commission being supportive of 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 this because it will be a team team effort and team funding effort. So we'll be out there, we'll be out there pounding the bushes for some funding.
Okay.
This is helpful.
Good, good. Alrighty. It's slightly early, but I don't think that hurts to move forward on item number four. Interviews and appointments. And we'll start with the planning commission. We have three three-year terms. And let's see. I have folks that have applied, Donnie Fisher, Ron Thomas, Raymond Bruning, Bob Agetson, Doug Rockwell, Amy Lindsay, Randall Hughes and Christopher Garcia. Am I missing anyone from the list that Sandy or Stephanie have?
Did you say Doug Rockwell?
Yeah.
Yeah, Doug Rockwell, yes.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. So normally we will proceed with just informal interviews and can Stephanie tell me who might be available to be interviewed?
Hold on.
Okay.
So I see Chris Garcia is on here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Garcia, good evening.
Uh, good evening, ma'am.
Thank you for joining us. We're doing, we're starting the interviews for Planning Commission. And just, just the first question I have top my head, why do you want to do this?
Uh, well, I've been looking for a volunteer opportunity to exercise of many years of service in the field of planning, uh, in my local, in my community. Typically, I'm either working in another community, either for local government or the federal government, um, many times as a contractor. So again, I was, uh, I've found a home here in Jefferson County within the last four years and I thought it was time to go ahead and volunteer to see if I can uh, hopefully influence some positive development in a community I'm growing to love here.
Okay, anyone else with questions for Mr. Garcia?
I I do. Uh, this is Commissioner Nolan, Mr. Garcia. Um, so what does the Planning Commission have before it or or may have before in the future that intrigues you so much that you want to serve on the Planning Commission?
Well.
Is it a Hilltop Hotel issue? Is it a solar fields issue? Can you be specific?
Um, well, I think, um, the, based on what I've seen, not only from the economic development standpoint, um, there's a lot going on. I think there's, um, having been and watching growth in neighboring counties in Loudoun and Frederick County, uh, the development's moving westward and to our area. I think I'm finding Jefferson County is very desirable. So um, I do see uh, some more issues in the tourism industry that's going to need to be addressed. And I think I was getting land use and uh, has been a, you know, a big question in some cases. I've seen the Hilltop development. I kind of watch that tacitly. I know that's been going on for years. Um, and then obviously there's some decision making about industrially, kind of a kind of well versed in what's going on with that. And then I also have some interest in how do you balance all that out for your community so that it maintains its character that drew me here, and I think that a lot of people are here for, that allows economic development to occur uh, in a way that's very sustainable. And I mean that in the, not only in the physical sense of sustainable planning And I mean that, not only in the physical sense of sustainable planning and development, that things stay as you plan them and design them for decades. And hopefully, if you've done something well, it stays for, you know, centuries, and that's a sign of success when you plan and build in that fashion. And then also that we continue to progress. I know people are coming, even in the jurisdictions that I work in. I work in the Commonwealth of Virginia right now for a small jurisdiction. And I do hear that price is an issue, and there's definitely some wonderful things we have here in this county. So I know it's coming, so I definitely want to hopefully help influence some positive development in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Garcia?
This is Ralph. I just, Ralph Florenceetti, I'm just curious, I think you're working for Herndon, is that correct?
That's correct. Right now, I'm the Community Design Planner for the town of Herndon. So my main function is I manage two architectural review boards. One is for historic district in downtown. And I also manage another architectural control district in the remainder of the town. We just had another virtual meeting, a long virtual meeting last night that lasted well into the evening. And then I also serve as a deputy zoning administrator for the town. So I do a lot of permit reviews, zoning determinations. And so I've forwarded back into some more detailed current planning issues, whereas previously, I've done a lot of long-range planning, at least at the local government level. And I've got a really long history of long-range planning and community planning, both in various sizes of communities, counties, large municipal cities, and now in a small town.
Well, one of the reasons I asked the question is, when I was a kid, Herndon was the country, but now it's the city.
Yes.
And do you have any experience with planning in areas that have farmlands or park areas and things like that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm fairly well-versed, I'm getting well-versed. I guess it's been a couple of years now with Herndon, and particularly with the historical aspect, I've kind of seen the growth and development. And now, obviously, we're getting some urban development. To answer the question more directly, yes, as a long, the comprehensive planning manager for Loudoun County, obviously, there's strong presence and reliance on not only the land use and economy of Western Loudoun with its agrarian uses, and, you know, with the backdrop of virginity and growing suburban, and now becoming hopefully urban development in the eastern part of the county. So I've had some experience in most aspects, again, small towns, large counties, with rural development that's vital to the county and to the region, as well as, you know, urban, urban planning, down to working on things like Silverline planning that I've done both for that county, and worked a little bit on that in Loudoun, I mean, in Herndon as well. So yes, I've had some experience with rural, rural development. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I have one quick thing. Chris, this is Commissioner Compton. Just very brief answer is all I need. If you're appointed to the Planning Commission, what would be something you look to change?
Well, I think, and what little I've watched the county and some of the municipalities work on, one is increasing public participation and making that more, I would like to see more of that as a commissioner, to really get the pulse of the community desires. The other is consistency in decision-making and adhering to good practices of urban planning, urban and community planning, and as well as ethical planning. I'm not saying that anybody has done that in Jefferson County, but those are pretty high on my list of things that are important in the field, particularly for Planning Commission, so that they are credible and do, to make good decisions based on, in part, what the community is desiring as well.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
All right. Thank you. No more questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
You're quite welcome. Thank you very much.
All right. Stephanie, who else might we have online?
We have Amy Lindsay.
Okay. All right, Ms. Lindsay, this is Jane Tab. We're doing interviews for Planning Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, good, good. I see you've worked in Montgomery County planning. My question to you is, what is your understanding of the similarities and differences between West Virginia and Maryland state codes on what you can do as far as planning and zoning?
So the states are very different, just in terms of local control versus a centralized state control. I have read through the subdivision regulations, as well as zoning ordinance, and a number of the other master planning documents. So I do understand the states are very different, and definitely the balance of power of community input versus property owner's rights are also very different.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Ms. Lindsay the same question that I asked Mr. Garcia. And Ms. Lindsay, what is it about the Planning Commission that intrigues you so much that you want to be on the Planning Commission? Is there a particular issue that's about to come up or has come up that you're more interested in? And if so, would you share that with us, please?
There isn't any particular issue coming up. It's really more that I see a tremendous opportunity here in Jefferson County, not to overdevelop, but to develop correctly. You think about a lot of developments that happened back in the 60s through 80s, and it was all auto-centric development. Jefferson County has such an opportunity to really preserve its farmland and still allow, you know, hopefully, more transit-oriented development in a limited manner, but also development that is not necessarily auto-centric. You know, there is tremendous opportunity to preserve the environment while allowing for the population to grow to a limited extent and create sort of healthy development.
And what would you, explain to me what you, what you mean by healthy development?
There's a tremendous connection between the built environment and public health. And Jefferson County ranks as West Virginia's healthiest county when you look at that. But, but there are other opportunities. So for example, making certain inclusion of walking trails, bicycle facilities, that development is balanced, so the community amenities get developed at the same pace as residential development. You know, you were just talking about the groundwater issue. You know, clearly, in a county where many people depend on their well water, the health of your, your groundwater is critically important for community health.
Other questions from commissioners?
Just very briefly, go ahead, Ralph, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to ask Mr. Garcia, and I'll ask Ms. Lindsay also. I believe they both commute, and I believe the meeting is 7:00 PM on Tuesdays, once a month, or twice a month. Are they available?
Yes, actually, I am available and can make certain that, you know, barring unforeseen circumstances, that I can be present for those meetings.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Josh, do you have a question?
I'll just follow the line and ask the exact same questions I did to Chris. Amy, should you be appointed, what would be the first thing you'd want to change as a member of the Planning Commission?
I hate to sound all me, too, but I do have to say that public involvement is something that I would want to change. You know, I live in Jefferson County, and Jefferson County's future is my future, and everyone that lives here should feel that way and be involved. And I mean that in a positive way. I'm not just referencing, you know, demonstrations and in a negative way, but, but people should be really involved in their communities and want to have a voice in the direction they grow in. So I would very much like to see an increase in public conversation about land use and the county's future.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I agree with that, too. More public involvement is always a good thing. I guess currently at the Planning Commission, they have public comment, they have public hearings. What else do you propose they could do to solicit more public involvement? I mean, you can't force someone to want to be involved. What would you suggest we do to get more people to be involved?
One of the biggest barriers to involvement is education, and that's just education about planning issues, making certain that the public is, understands what, what the process is, how they can participate, making certain that participation, so that communication happens in a way that, that works for the people you're trying to communicate with. From having done years of public engagement, you know, I've planned meetings and shown up, and there were four people. Really a bummer. I mean, and, and some of that had to do with, it could be all manner of things, not knowing the school calendar and knowing that there was a back-to-school night that night. But some of it is really speaking to people in plain language and making certain they understand how issues impact the community. So I agree, you can't force people to participate, but you can really lower the barriers for participation.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Caleb, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I think she's done a good job answering everyone else's questions, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you.
All right. Stephanie, who else do we have?
It looks like we have Ray Bruning on the line as well.
Okay. Mr. Bruning, good evening.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, well, we're doing, obviously, interviews for Planning Commission, and you have served on the Planning Commission. Can you tell me what you've learned as a Planning Commissioner?
Actually, yeah, like you said, I've been on here for three years now, and I've learned a whole lot. And I agree with everybody on the public input, and we try to take into account public input. But, you know, we also, as Planning Commissioners, the one thing I've learned is we have to balance public input and then the legal requirements or legal obligations that we have to, you know, make decisions with. So that's an important aspect that I think I have learned over the last three years. And I think, you know, also, I think we've done a good job over the last three years. As many of you know, we're trying to reorganize the ordinances now, so they're easier to read and go through. So like I said, I think, you know, I'm just getting my feet under me now. It actually took me about a year to really get, you know, feel comfortable in the, you know, on the Planning Commission. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking to you guys, because you guys know my record and know that I've been there. So I'll answer any questions.
All right, other commissioners?
All right, Ray, I'm not going to ask you the same thing that I asked the others, because you've already been on the Planning Commission for three years, as you say, but if there were something you could change or do better, is there, would you have any comment about that? What would it be?
Well, like you said, the public input, but you can't force the public, you know, I'd love to see more public input. You know, occasionally, we get, when there's a high-profile thing happening, and, you know, we weren't directly involved in the Rockwell stuff, but there's been some other stuff, you'll get a lot of public out there. But unfortunately, I think we're kind of a bedroom community, and we do have to balance that growth. Is there anything I would change? Not really. I think we're, I think we're making good progress. Like I said, the big thing to me was the ordinances, and even me now getting familiar with them, they're very difficult to read through and go through and find things in. So I think that's a big, I'm not going to say it's an accomplishment yet, but it's a, it's a big ongoing process to get those rewritten and make, make it easier for the community to, to go through the ordinances and find things.
Thank you.
Ralph?
I guess, I've only been on the board for like six months now, but I guess the question is, is there a particular part of the county that you feel needs to be studied more?
The urban, the urban growth boundaries, like in Shepherdstown, and even in Charlestown, those sometimes get a little sticky, because simply the needs and desires of the towns, especially when you get closer to the limits, and, you know, you know, Ralph, that, you know, especially that 45 corridor in Shepherdstown, I think there needs, I'm not going to say a little more coordination, I'm not sure exactly what the answer is, we're going to need to keep working on that. But those type of things, I think, are probably where the county needs the most work, is, you know, those gray areas between, they're not gray areas, the county, you know, has jurisdiction over them, but the city also wants input into that stuff.
Thank you.
Josh or Caleb?
Just very quick thing, Mr. Bruning, I know you guys are rewriting and reorganizing the ordinances, et cetera, to make them easier. I mean, were you part of that undertaking to suggest something like that? It would probably be beneficial to the public to have easily understandable ordinance versus what previously the ordinance, I mean, were you part of suggesting doing something like that?
Not directly, but yes, Steve Stolliver, you know, was instrumental in pushing that. And then, you know, the whole county commission, you know, is on board, I'm sorry, the whole Planning Commission is, is on board with that and trying to help. Now, we're, you know, none of us are experts at writing this stuff, so we've actually, you know, outsourced it, and then we'll all be reviewing it, very detailed reviews of it, to make sure we're happy with the, with the results.
I mean, that in itself could be one of the successes of the current board, redoing those ordinances, make them easily understood for the public. So I think you guys should give yourself a pat on the back for even suggesting doing that. So there is some progress going on there. One other thing I want to point out, some of the municipalities zoning- going on there. One other thing I want to point out, some of the municipalities zoning and planning departments do some things that some folks are not too happy with. Do you feel you all balance and give consideration to things before you as best you can versus just putting a rubber stamp on things?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we don't do the zoning, but, you know, some of the rezoning and that, we have control over. And, you know, I think the county's done a very good job of planning and zoning and, you know, for us to willy-nilly rezone something, you know, we usually take a lot of time before we, you know, we consider that. You know, there's a lot of things to consider in doing that. So I think the county's done a good job in the planning and, you know, laying out where, you know, industrial is versus business versus, you know, rural. You know, and many of you know, we're also trying to push some solar farm stuff so these farms don't go away, right? So, you know, if farms become unprofitable and a farmer wants to sell, you know, maybe a solar farm's the answer rather than just a development going in. So those are some of the things we're, you know, currently looking at.
All right, thanks, that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bruning? All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, I don't see anyone else on, who we have on our list as an attendee or under the, but I would.
Excuse me, this is Bob Heson. I've been on here since you started this discussion.
All right, okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Heson, we're, of course, as you know, we're interviewing for Planning Commission seats. I know you're a retired lawyer. Tell me why you want to do this, now that you're retired.
Yeah. Oh, well, Madam President, members of the commission, for a long time, frankly, I've been concerned about the Planning Commission's adherence to the letter and spirit of the comprehensive plan. My understanding of the law is that the comprehensive plan is the law and is, and compliance with it under the decisions of Supreme Court of Appeals is required. So in a general overall sense, that's what prompted me to submit my application. More specifically, I have recently become concerned that the Planning Commission was proceeding in secret in relation to this solar facility issue. And I certainly object to the term solar panel farm. They're not farms, they're facilities. And that's what I think the law recognizes them as. And I've become interested in the interaction of the county ordinances, zoning ordinances and responsibilities in relation to the new West Virginia statute that was enacted, how those interact and what responsibilities or control the county has in relation to obligations that the state of West Virginia has seemed to assume in that regard. I don't object to solar panels, but I think that the process needs to be open. And when you have a situation where the, a small committee is meeting with national proponents of solar panels to come up with a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, and then it's going to be sprung on the public apparently at a subsequent meeting in what would unfortunately amount to a sham hearing. You know, I'm, as a, you know, resident of Jefferson County, I wasn't born and raised here, but I've been here since 1970. You know, public.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit on my end.
Yeah.
Okay, all of this concern about public input can be alleviated by appropriate notices and education of the public and so forth. Recently, there was an article in the spirit of Jefferson about the solar panel stuff. And I mean, it had things in it that were just not true. And I know, coming back and looking at the minutes of the recent Planning Commission meetings, that one member tried to get the commission to approve these solar facilities as an essential utility, which would mean it would be totally unregulated. You know, this is just one example of concerns that I've had about, you know, how the planning is being done and, you know, concerns about not being able, you know, things coming up without people having a meaningful opportunity to have input and really to have a say in what's going on. And vested interests getting the jump on citizens through secret meetings with Planning Commissioners. Unnoticed meetings when the policies of the County Commission say that working sessions are supposed to be open to the public and noticed to the public. I mean, it's just, to me, it's just outrageous. So that was my immediate concern, but not my only concern. And that's what prompted me to put my hat in the ring. And, you know, I submitted a letter which gave you some relevant background information and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, other questions from other Commissioners?
Hey Bob, this is Patty Nolan and you answered mine. Thank you.
Hey Patty.
This is Ralph Lawrence. Eddie, I apologize, AT&amp;T kicked me off for a while, but I did hear the last part.
Sorry. Do you need me to repeat something, Ralph, or?
No, no, I think I heard the last part. I think I understand. But I apologize for missing part of it.
All right, any other questions from Commissioners to Mr. Heson?
I have one brief thing, Mr. Tab. Sir, you mentioned at the beginning of your, you said that the Planning Commission was not following the comprehensive plan.
No, I didn't, no, excuse me, no, I did not say that. I don't mean to cut you off, but that's not what I said.
Can you elaborate on what you actually said?
Yeah, what I said was that I have had concerns about adherence to the comprehensive plan. I didn't make a flat statement that the Planning Commission was deviating from the comprehensive plan in any particular instance. But in general, my concern has been that the comprehensive plan has been more of a fluid document than a controlling source for decisions that the Planning Commission has made.
Is there any example that sticks out in your mind as to why you would form that opinion?
Well, I've had a number of experiences with the Planning Commission over the years. Nothing really comes to mind. Nothing, let me see. I don't remember whether it was the Planning Commission or Board of Zoning Appeals, but we had a dust-up some years ago about a drug-infested rock concert that came to the county for a year that I had some serious reservations about whether that kind of program was compliant with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, I was just looking for an example. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Heson? Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you. President Tab, you have a good evening too.
All righty. Is there anyone else online or listening for Planning Commission appointments? Stephanie, do you have anyone?
I don't see anyone else on the list. I can't see all the phone callers, but I'm looking through the attendees and the presenters and I don't see anyone else who's on our list. If you are joining us via the webinar and you might be logged on under a different name, can you raise your hand? I'm not, I don't see anyone else.
Okay, if somebody is just on the phone to do their interview, is there a way that they can contact you so you know, you can unmute them and they can participate?
So Mr. Heson was able to unmute himself and tell us that he was on the line. So I believe the other phone callers were able to do that as well.
Okay. Anybody out there? Well, hearing nothing. No other folks out there to be interviewed.
Madam President, I don't mean to be impertinent, but Mr. Rockwell indicated to me that he was sending something in that he would be available by his phone, but he lacked the technology to come into the meeting through this method. So if somebody wants to call him, I'm sure he'd be glad to speak to the issue and I can give his phone number if somebody would like it.
I also saw that email from Mr. Rockwell. If you could share his phone number right now, then perhaps, is that all right with everyone and then?
Do we want his phone number public, or?
Well, that's what I wondered too.
Is what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Yes, his phone number is.
Well, does Mr. Rockwell want his phone number public? That's our question right now. Let me see if I can.
Yeah, I think he put it in the email, Madam President.
Right. I'm looking for my, through my stack of stuff. What I thought was I could email that to Stephanie and then she could call him and then we wouldn't have his phone number public in case he didn't want it public. I found his phone number and I will email that to Stephanie right now.
Okay.
We'll see how that works.
He can also call in. You don't have to have anything special to use the number. So, but if you forward it to me, I'll try, I guess I can put him on my speakerphone here maybe and try to do it that way.
Yeah. 684, all righty, I guess, great. Being sent to you, Stephanie.
Okay. Where there is a will to have a meeting, there is a will. And so, I'm still waiting for it to come through.
Okay.
Still waiting.
Jane, if you use the chat feature, you can send a private message just to Stephanie.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that, yeah. Okay.
See, maybe do that.
Yeah, if you look to where it says "to," you can pick from the panelists that are on there and send just to an individual panelist if you like.
Stephanie, did you get my email or no? Are you still waiting?
I'm still waiting.
Oh my, all right. I got you. Now I got to go back through my pile of papers and find the phone number. All right, then, how did I just hit? Okay, just say "send" right over here.
All right, okay. Can you say something, Mr. Rockwell, so I can see if the Planning Commission or if the County Commissioners can pick you up? All right, hold on, let me move you closer. Can you say it again?
I can barely hear him.
Yeah, I can barely hear him too.
If I speak louder, does it help?
Yes.
Yeah, that does help. Can you hear okay, Mr. Rockwell?
I can.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mr. Rockwell. We're doing, this is Jane Tab. We're doing interviews for Planning Commission. County Commissioners are asking questions of you folks. And so I'll just start off with, you're retired, so, and I know you have had experience with the Planning Commission in your past. Why do you want to do this? Why do you want to be on the Planning Commission?
Well, I'm offering my time. The county's good to me, both professionally and personally, for me and my family. I've got some spare time. I'm willing to devote to help with these issues. Land planning and zoning has always been an interest of mine, both professionally and personally. It's something I have some background in and some limited knowledge on. I thought that's something to the commission.
Okay, other Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Rockwell, this is Patty Nolan. And I have a question for you with regard Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Rockwell, this is Patsy Nolan, and um and I have a question for you with regard to um I know you're retired and uh you've been around the county for a while. I've known you for a long time. So I'm curious as to what intrigues you so much that you want to serve on the Planning Commission? Is there a special uh issue that's coming up or before the Planning Commission now that that really is interested you to the point that you want to serve on that board?
Well, as you may remember, I've appeared more than one occasion before the commission, County Commission, concerning amendments to the zoning order. And I think that perhaps some guidance can be offered by me as to different options as how to address problems and perhaps propose some solutions that should be can be considered. I have found that by just appearing at the public hearings on matters as they're presented to the public, uh they give you three minutes to speak, and by that stage, the Planning Commission is so vested in what they have already drafted that they don't really consider changes or different ideas. So it appears to me that to have a, you know, credible influence uh or advice is that needs to be in the formative stage, and you're not a member of the commission, you're not involved in formative stages. So that's one of the reasons I would like to be on there. I I know now that they're considering uh solar facilities. And I think there's a subcommittee that's been formed for that purpose, and uh I think that that's an interesting topic.
Thank you.
All right, Ralph?
Uh, I don't have any major questions, just uh, I know Doug, Doug, I know you like to travel and do some things. Are you available once a month for the next three years?
Ralph, my schedule is flexible enough that I can work around the dates.
All right.
Uh, you know, we do go to Florida, and I will tell you that for next year, I have uh for February and March, I've already reserved a place in Florida. You know, they have telephones there, too.
Okay, well, thank you, Doug.
Sure.
All right. Caleb or Josh?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Have a good evening.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak up.
Alrighty.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Bye, Stephanie.
Bye.
Uh.
So I think I, that is, that's everyone that I um keep checking the attendee list, I keep checking the staff list. I do not see anyone else. I ask you to raise their hand. I don't want to raise their hand, so I think that's all we have.
Okay.
I think Ron Thomas was trying to get on.
Oh, I see him. I'm sorry. He is here. I I I didn't go back to look at the panelist list again, so he is here. I do not show him having any audio, though.
Yes, I just connected. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And I finally got video working. I was having some uh connectivity issues and sorry about being being delayed.
Oh, this is this is Jane Tab. Um, Mr. Thomas, glad you could join us, and we're doing interviews for Planning Commission, which you have served on the Planning Commission, and can you tell me um what you think are the most important things you've learned as a Planning Commissioner?
Well, yes, I I definitely learned that it it is not as easy or as simple that I perceived it would be when I started. There are a lot of rules and regulations, and uh I wish it was only one day a month, but it literally comprised of at least a week a month doing research on the packets when they come in and digging and finding out what the regulations were and trying to sort out what the best option and issues that I need to bring up during the committee. So it has been a challenge. I've learned of a lot about it, but no way have I learned even close to everything that I need to do to be um a lot more proficient than I am. I do ask a lot of questions, and and I hope that I've contributed something over the last three years, and if the commission of council would like me to continue, I I am here to do so.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Thomas, this is Patsy Nolan, and I just would like to ask you, you've been on the commission for a little while, uh Planning Commission for a little while. Uh, having had that experience, is is there something that you think that the Planning Commission or you as a commissioner could uh could improve upon or do better?
There's there's always room for improvement, and I apologize if my dog barks in the background. The the one, you know, there's been issues that come up that I continuously, you know, debate within myself. Uh, you know, we have the rules, the comprehensive plan, and it seems like an awful lot we are presented with waivers. And at some point, I I I start thinking, these rules are here for a reason, and I understand there are exceptions, but sometimes issuing waivers every time someone comes up may not be the answer, and if it is, then maybe the comprehensive plan should be changed a little bit. I I like, I would like to look into refinings, so and and don't get me wrong. They've done an excellent job. The staff is always making changes. Uh, we spend a, we have a lot of homework and reviewing the the updates and changes. I would I would like to see that continue and probably never end, because I don't think we'll ever get it perfect, because not is not only the county is changing, there's a lot of things happening now. There's a, you know, green energy, uh, there's a lot of issues to address, and 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 now a good example is green energy. There was a, there's a solar panel, uh, company trying to come in and and do solar panels in Jefferson County, and I struggled with that because I've did a lot of research, and a lot of states are having issues with those panels. So it it took a very good month of research and said, okay, I'm not against it, but let's make sure it's done right. The staff was excellent in gathering all the information. We 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 got together, had had some special meetings, and they really came up with a plan to make it work in Jefferson County, where it can be not only successful, but it won't create any harm to the other citizens or in, you know, or ill feelings towards neighbors. It it's excellent, and I, you know, we haven't finished that yet. We're still working on it. But I love to see that collaboration between the members, the staff, working out the details and coming up to a solution that not only benefits um industry of coming into Jefferson County, but it enhances Jefferson County, and it's good for the county, and it's good for the people of Jefferson County. That that's what I want to see more of, and I don't think, I'm I'm looking for things to change, because the progress is the way it is now, is exactly the way it should be, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Questions?
No major question. This is Ralph, but uh what do you feel should be changed about the Planning Commission, if anything?
Well, I'll be honest with you. Um, I like the direction that it's going. I I like, like I said, it it's not, no one is coming in in the meetings, as far as I see, with preconceived notion on making a decision. They 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 do their research on the packets before the meeting. Everyone has knowledge of it. You you don't see people reading the packet at the last minute. The staff does an excellent job giving us overviews and helping point us in the right direction in the comprehensive plan to look at the regulations. So it's, they're really doing an excellent job. I just don't want to see that stop. Right now, there's nothing major that I would like to change, to be quite honest with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Josh or Caleb?
Just quick thing, uh, how do you think the current makeup of the board works together? Pretty well, needs improvements, mediocre?
I'd be, it it's, I don't see it getting any better, to be honest. Uh, and not not, you know, and not because I'm a part of it, anybody can be replaced. But the the makeup of the of the panel is, if you go back and look at our votes, it's not been unanimous across the board. I haven't always agreed with the panel, and some of the members have not agreed with mine, but we go through the process. It's it's a democracy. Everyone gets to be heard in the discussion, all the people's discussion, their views are taken and weighed. I don't think it should change, not the atmosphere. People may change, but they need to keep the rhythm and the collaboration and the cohesiveness, the synergy, if you will, of the panel now. That's the way it needs to stay, whether you have different people on it or not.
Okay.
Thanks.
Right. Is that all all the questions from commissioners? All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Have a good evening.
Thank you, too. You also.
All right. Stephanie, one last call. They uh.
So I do not, I have scrolled through. I don't see anyone else. I don't see anyone who's raised their hand. Um, so and they were all, I mean, Russ and I are kind of talking behind the scenes here. They were all invited as panelists, so they have the ability to unmute their phone if they called in the number that they were provided. So if they're on here, they can unmute their phone, but I don't see anyone else in my list, um, and it would leave us. So we have Donnie Fisher, who's a current member, and then we have Randall Hughes, and I do not see them anywhere on my list.
Okay, let's give it a minute just to make sure if they're having difficulties that they can try to connect. Well, just uh moving forward, we're looking for to fill three slots, and this should be interesting, doing this all virtually, because I won't be able to count hands. I'm looking for suggestions on how to proceed. Because normally, we would make nominations and then take the three top vote-getters. Is that the way you want to do it? And we just have to do it by voice mail? I mean, not voice, but vo- voice voting?
You could do it as a roll call of commissioners, so you know, if you nominate, and then when you start voting, you could say, you could go through each commissioner for each vote. Do you want to do that? So you're not missing anyone, or if there's an easier way for you?
Yeah. Okay. Well, let me get a clean sheet of paper here.
I'll give you a minute.
Well.
Tell me when you want to. I'll start.
I'm ready for nominations. At least we can get that done.
Okay, I I am going to nominate three, uh, the three who are currently serving on the board. I think that they've been there long enough that they um, you know, they work well together. They have this, because he he said this, they don't always agree. Differences of opinion are always good, um, and everyone needs to be heard, so I'm going to nominate Ray Bruning, Donnie Fisher, and Ron Thomas.
Okay.
And and I like, I would just like to add to that, that, you know, I think uh being a member of any commission or board and having a single having a single issue as a reason to be on that board is uh is not a good reason to be on a board, because there are a whole lot of other issues that come before them. So with all due respect to all of the other applicants, you know, we can only pick three, and uh so that that's my reason for going with the three that are currently serving.
All right. Are there any other nominations? I'm going to nominate uh Mr. Garcia, Christopher Garcia, and Doug Rockwell.
Uh, this is Ralph.
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to nominate Amy Lindsay, Mr. Garcia, and Ray Bruning. I do believe a lot of others are qualified, but I think a little new blood and a little old blood is always good on it, like me.
Okay. My list of nominations are Donnie Fisher, Ron Thomas, Ray Bruning, Christopher Garcia, Doug Rockwell, and Amy Lindsay. Any other nominations? And I have a motion to close the nominations?
I move close nominations.
Second.
Okay, so moving in second to close the nominations, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm going to go down my list as they were nominated. Each of us has three votes. So um I'm gonna have to it'll be interesting here, see how I can do here on taking notes on who votes for whom and make sure it's three each.
I'm keeping track, too, Jane.
Okay, good, good. All right. First nomination is Donnie Fisher. And I vote for Donnie.
This is Patsy. I vote for Donnie.
All right.
Caleb puts an affirmative.
All right.
Affirmative.
All right, Josh? All right, uh Ron Thomas. Ron Thomas is the next nominee. Who votes for him?
This is Patsy. I vote for Ron Thomas.
Okay, and so do I.
This is Caleb. I vote for Ron.
All right.
Josh also.
All right. Uh, moving on, Ray Bruning. Who votes for Ray?
This is Patsy. I vote for Ray.
This is Caleb. I vote for Ray. Josh as well.
All right. Chris Garcia. I vote for Chris.
I'll give him a vote.
All right.
See if I'm on. Yeah.
Yeah. Alrighty. Oh, Doug Rockwell. And I'm, I messed up. I used all my votes already, so I nominated Doug. I apologize. Amy Lindsay.
I give a vote to Amy.
All right. Ralph, I have you down for only two votes. Is there someone?
I voted for Garcia, and I now let's see. I go ahead.
Yeah, I have you voting down for Garcia and Amy Lindsay.
Do you wish, do you wish to cast another vote, Ralph?
I'll I'll give Doug a, Doug a vote.
Okay. Well, from my records, and Stephanie, you confirm that Donnie Fisher received four, Ron Thomas received four, and Ray Bruning received three, and those are the majority vote-getters. Do you concur, Stephanie?
I do. That is what I have as well.
Okay. Well, congratulations to those folks. Uh, you're going to uh get to continue to serve, which is at some time a thankless job, but we certainly do appreciate your willingness to serve again. Uh, and that is Donnie Fisher, Ron Thomas, and Ray Bruning. And that concludes uh the Planning Commission vote. And we will now move on to the Development Authority. Let me get my list for that. And we will now move on to the Development Authority, let me get my list for that. And Stephanie, will you explain, uh, let's see, I think I have this right. Uh, Mr. Jim Gatz, uh, put his name in for Shepherdstown, but it is my understanding that the processes for municipal representation, that the, um, the city council or this, uh, has to submit... The town of Shepherdstown needs to submit three names for us to consider before we can take a vote on this position, is that correct?
That is correct. But we have, wait, hold on. Oh, we just, okay, yeah, so we only have, um, Mr. Gatz, who wants to be reappointed, but we have not received three recommendations from Shepherdstown at this time.
So I'm suggesting we don't take, um, up an interview for Mr. Gatz at this time.
He is currently on the line, if you...
Right, what I would prefer to do is, once we get the three names from the city of Sharp, uh, Shepherdstown, is to interview them all at the same time. A commissioner, uh, my fellow commissioners, do you agree, or you want to do something different?
I, I agree with that, I think, uh, I think interviewing all three at the same time would be better. And I've, I've worked with James on the Planning Commission, I mean, on the Camp Development Authority, uh, set for, since he was appointed, and, uh, so, yeah, I, I know he'll continue to serve until there is an appointment. So I, I'm okay with not, not interviewing him right now.
Okay. Anyone else have objections, moving forward to the, um, citizen representative seat that is being vacated by Julia Yu, Yuhas?
Well, Jane, back on Mr. Gatz, the only thing I'd ask him to say, and I think he did it on his email, but I think we probably should get it on the record, that he is willing to serve until somebody's nominated.
Right, well, and we have his applica... That's true, and we have his application, so, yeah, that's, that's right.
I don't think he needs to make a statement or anything, but just state that he's willing to stay until replaced, or not replaced.
Yeah, I think he made that clear in his email to us, I believe.
Yeah, I think we have that written record, so I think we're okay right now. Let's move on to the, uh, one citizen representative, um, seat, open seat. I have four that have applied for that, if I have that right, and I'll probably butcher these names. David... Jenna Liette, Jenny Lott, I don't know how to say that, um, but he's from Char- Charlestown. And Dara Kenne Mew, from Shepherdstown, and Lorena Chambers. Are any of them on the line and ready to, uh... Stephanie, can you locate them, and we do some interviewing?
We have, so we have all four of the applicants online, because we have Tim Ross as well, and he's...
That's right.
Yeah. So what I'm going to do is take them in alphabetical order, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So the first person we have is Dara Kenne Mew, I think, I'm not sure, I mean, I probably butchered... So I'm going to...
Okay, I'm unmuted, unmuted, it's all right.
Okay, well, first, first, uh, this is Jane Tab, and Dara, will you tell me how to say your last name?
Uh, Kenne Mewee.
Kenne Mewee.
Almost phonetical.
Okay, all right, well, I butchered it with it being phonetical, but I tried, all right. Um, can you tell me your understanding of, um, the duties or the authority of the Jefferson County Development Authority?
Uh, it's the support and the promotion of, uh, business and, uh, stable economy, a good tax base in, uh, Jefferson County.
Okay. Other commissioners with questions?
Uh, uh, this is Patsy, I have a few, hi, Mr. Kenne Mewee, talked to you earlier today, hi. Uh, I do have a couple of questions, uh, for all of the candidates this evening, and, um, they are, uh, the first one is, um, are you now, or have you been in the past, a member of Jefferson County Vision?
Um, I have not, I have not.
Okay, thank you.
My wife, my, my wife and I are relatively new to the area, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, if appointed, how would you contribute to achieving the goals of the Jefferson County Development Authority as a board member?
That's a pretty broad question.
It is, and you, you can make it as brief as you like.
Uh, my, I, I've served on a lot of boards and committees during my life, and, you know, one, one thing that, um, I have as a rule is, is that I don't walk in with any preconceived notion of imposing anything. I feel is, uh, my opinion, my view of things. You got to walk in, you have to listen, you have to, uh, understand, you have to learn. Um, and, uh, so, from what I've learned of, uh, the commission so far, um, basically, it's, uh, attracting, uh, businesses, uh, and, uh, to Jefferson County, and supporting the businesses that are already here. Um, there's a balancing act. Went through this with some of the Planning Commission folks, I listened in on that, and, uh, there's, uh, some development that may be considered too much, and then there's some development which is, uh, worthwhile, and, uh, would contribute to the communities, whichever...
Okay, additional questions from commissioners?
I, I muted myself before I said thank you.
Okay, I saw your mouth moving, I couldn't hear anything.
I got it.
Um, the question I have is, if you could bring in any business to the county, what kind of business would it be?
Uh, I don't know, Caleb, at this point, I, I don't know. Uh, it's not, uh, the way the county, uh, from what I see looking around, it's not, uh, uh, wow, okay. You can have small businesses, obviously. You can have, uh, high-end manufacturing businesses that, uh, don't, uh, uh, leave, uh, or create a large footprint, uh, that might be, uh, counterproductive to, uh, uh, quality of life in the county. Um, I've seen some of that, and when I lived in Vermont, um, some, uh, very technical manufacturing businesses, for example, that, uh, were very quiet, very, uh, quiet. Um, and, um, so, um, you have to look around and see what's, see what's there. So...
Okay, thank you.
Again, Caleb, a lot of it's, you got to, you got to listen to what's needed in the community, uh, what the work has already been done by, uh, uh, the Development Authority, and, uh, figure out how I can best contribute. That's why I'm applying.
Yeah. Any other questions from commissioners?
I, I guess the question is, I think that meets at 3:00 PM, and I can't even remember what day of the week, uh, does this appointment, or does your appointment allow you to be there?
Uh, I'm, I'm retired, actually, I'm retired twice. Something to do.
Okay. All right, any other questions? For Dara? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Have a good evening.
And next, we have David... Gilianet, Gil... I'm sorry if I murdered that name, which I probably did, or butchered that name. And so, I have unmuted him, but he needs to unmute himself.
David, can you unmute your phone? And talk to us?
There, no? So he's still self-muted, I have unmuted him, but he is self-muted, according to what...
And is he on the phone, or you don't know?
He's, must be on his computer, he doesn't have a webcam, but he does have, um...
Okay. All right, I was just wondering if there's a way you can send a message to him, if there may be his... I don't know if his email's in, in the packet or not.
It is, I, actually, I can send him a message here.
Okay.
Okay, I did send him a message. Um, in the meantime, I'm going to go ahead and mute him again, and we'll move on to, um, Lorena Chambers.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Chambers, this is Jane Tab with the County Commission. Uh, we're doing interviews for the Development Authority. Uh, how are you this evening?
I'm good, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Wonderful, I'm going to share, oh, oh, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm taking off my high-end Post-it note, that is spy work. How are you?
Oh, we're doing good, okay, very, very creative way to...
Got to do what you got to do.
That's true, that's true, all right. Um, can you, uh, explain to me your understanding of the role and duties of, um, folks that are on the Jefferson County Development Authority?
Absolutely, um, I am a little unclear between a citizen representative and the municipality representatives, but overall, my understanding is that we are here to serve, to be able to bring in new business, strengthen current business, and frankly, strengthen the economic development of Jefferson County. Um, I think that it's a great opportunity, especially now in this really troubling times, to be able to rethink, uh, new ways of doing things here, not necessarily because there's anything wrong or awry with Jefferson County, but because I think the entire economic, um, universe is going to change dramatically. And I think that our community is going, really going to need a lot of, um, a lot of help, and a lot of new ways of thinking. So that's what I'd like to bring to the, to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ms. Chambers, this is Patsy Nolan, are you a, a resident of a municipality?
No, I live in the county.
Okay, all right, good, so I do have a couple of questions for you. Um, are you a member of the Jefferson County Vision?
No, I'm not.
Okay, uh, and what do you believe the goals and purposes of the JCDAs to be? And if appointed, how would you contribute, um, as a member to those goals and that purpose?
So, um, again, I think the goals are to strengthen the, the businesses that we have here, bring in new businesses, but also potentially identify new sectors or strengthen other sectors. One of the areas that I would like to have us potentially consider is the federal workforce. We know that the federal government right now is dramatically changing. Uh, folks are actually being asked to work from home, and because of COVID-19, I really think that it's forced a lot of agencies, but a lot of businesses, to rethink how they actually work. And I think that that might offer a silver lining in all of this for Jefferson County. So what is it that we can do to bring more folks here? Um, separate from that, it is actually bringing agencies as DC is actually spreading out and separating out their agencies and offices. You know, um, we have great senators, I've worked very closely, uh, with Senator, uh, Moore Capito, because of, uh, we had issues with not having internet here on Shepherd Bridge Road, and their offices were very good about it. But the thing is that Senator Byrd, when he was here, right, we were able to bring in a lot of agencies, and a lot of, uh, frankly, really strengthened, really strong agencies and offices here. And I'd like to see that actually be on our agenda, so that we start, well, moving towards it. I think Senator Manchin and, um, Senator Capito actually would be very helpful in that, as they actually increase their seniority in the US Senate. So that is one area. The other area is actually strategic planning. Um, I'm a strategic planner by training, I do marketing, I do advertising. Um, we do it with federal agencies, we do it with nonprofits, because a lot of our business is based in DC. And because, um, and I, as I did a little bit of research when I was looking at this opportunity, I saw that the JCDAs in this moment of actually, if you want to call it renewal, but there is that strategic plan coming on down, and I just think I could be really helpful there, um, especially because it's exactly what I love to do, and I do it, actually do it for a living.
Thank you.
Okay. Other commissioners?
It's, uh, the question I usually ask, I think you kind of already led into it, it's what kind of business would you bring, if you could bring in any kind of business? I think you alluded to trying to bring in federal agencies, if you could, but would there be anything else?
If I had a magic wand, I would bring them in immediately. Um, there is, I think there are sectors, I think, I mean, our county is so amazing, and yet, it's only 90 minutes away from DC. I just think it's night and day, um, when you, you know, are coming up 3:40, and you sort of go through the path, I think it's amazing. But I, I, again, the silver lining is COVID-19. I would just see people who are going to be traveling by airline less and less, so why, uh, potentially, maybe we can bring in some eco-businesses or tourism? What is it that we could do that is really, it is, uh, when we bought our house 15, 16 years ago, it happened because my husband asked, what do you want to do for the weekend? It was Labor Day, and in fact, we drove in from DC, we, and, um, we spent the day, and we went back to DC, we were able to do this day trip very comfortably, and it was night and day. Um, the other end of that story is that the following week, we came back, and we started looking for housing, because I fell in love with it so immediate. So the fact that we're so close to DC, I think, offers a lot of opportunity for ecotourism, um, as well as, uh, day trips, as, you know, Baltimore and DC. And then finally, I think there's information, knowledge. There's no reason why we can't grow an IT belt being so close to DC. And frankly, yes, it's an hour, or at least from my house to Dulles, if one needs to get to the airport. But again, I think with new information and new, um, frankly, uh, you know, new technology, we're able to do that. So I just think there's a, a, a lot of positive ways to be able to rethink certain things. Um, and I, you know, and I am, again, um, and the other candidates said as well, I'm here to learn as well from my, uh, from my peers, and I've had those experiences where I've learned from many other businesses, and learned how they do business. And that's, I think, how we strengthen what we are able to do here, so I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else, Ralph or Josh?
Oh, I have a quick thing, Ms. Chambers, this is Fisher Compton, can you, I see your resume anywhere, I mean, I've got that in the email. Can you briefly describe your professional background, very briefly?
Um, absolutely, um, I've owned my own business for, since 2004. I'm a successful business owner, I happen to do marketing and advertising. So we do work with the federal government, we do it with nonprofit agencies, um, and we also do political campaigns. I've not done any in West Virginia, though, so...
Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, my question, this is Ralph, uh, you mentioned bringing federal people up. Are you talking about bringing up an agency building, or having a private contractor build a building, the lease to government, or are you talking about, um, using assisting buildings and trying to get a government agency to come that way?
Right, those are great questions, and honestly, I would say that I would do, uh, some research as a researcher, that's how we start off with the question, we research what's there. But what comes to mind is the 3M Kodak plant, I understand it, it was sold, I don't know if it's actually been used, but I think it's important to take a look at what we have, the infrastructure that we have, and I think either, uh, private contractors, federal contractors, or agencies, although I think the requirements perhaps, um, might be a little different for a federal agency. although I think the requirements perhaps might be a little different for federal agencies and federal buildings. We'd have to look into that. But I do think that there are a lot of opportunities here, whether it's actually refurbishing and reusing the facilities and infrastructure that we have already. I would definitely start there. And I, and I, and I'm not an expert at this moment, but I would definitely put in the work to learn about it.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners for Ms. Chambers?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Glad you could join us.
Thank you so much.
All right. Stephanie, do we have David? Were you able to unmute him, or is Tim Ross available?
I believe Tim Ross is available. I have not been able to get David to unmute his phone. So unmute Mr. Ross here. Mr. Ross, I have, oh, whoops. Mr. Ross, I have unmuted you, and I need you, oh, there he goes. Okay, we're good.
Good evening, Mr. Ross. Are you there? Oh. I'm not hearing any response.
I'm there. It looks, he's green. It looks like he's un, that he is unmuted.
All right, Tim, can you hear us? Mr. Ross? Oh, my.
Oh, he raised his hand.
Okay.
Let me try again.
All right.
So it says that he's self-muted. Okay, and now it says he's unmuting his phone. Mr. Ross? He says he's unmuted, and he's asked if I can call him.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there he is.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
He said he's unmuted. All right.
All right.
Okay. Here I am. You see me? Do you even want to see me? I need a haircut.
I don't see you, but I hear you.
Depends what kind of towel you're wearing, honestly.
All right.
Nothing.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Ross. We're, as you know, we're doing interviews for the Jefferson County Development Authority. And so I'll just ask the first question. What, do you feel you, how can I say this the right way? What special skills would you bring to the table as a Development Authority member?
Oh, well, that's a different question than all the others. Okay.
Creative here, you know.
Okay, all right. What special skills? Well, you're saying versing all the other interviewees or the other members?
No, just what do you bring to the table at the Development Authority?
All right, well, I'm a good listener. I work pretty well groups with others. Try to keep things light. It was talked before, I think, in our three previous interviews. So I am persistent, you might, might realize. And at least I'm a good listener. I'm an excellent researcher, and I'm a pretty well-read, pretty well-educated on many different topics. And when I don't know something, I know how to find the answer.
Okay.
Hard work. You are.
Other commissioners, questions?
Yes, I have, I have a couple. What do you believe the goals and purposes of the JCA to be? And what would you bring to the table to help further those goals and objectives?
Well, the state mandate is every county has to have a development authority. And the development authority is supposed to develop the economy, do things that develop the economy, okay? A conversation I had with Andy Blake before he left, he says, look, Tim, he says, what the JCDAs does is sell lots. That's what JCDAs do. That's the business plan. We sell lots. So I don't agree with Andy's position. To me, that was pretty cynical. If you're just going to sell lots, you don't really have any control of who you're bringing in or anything. As I mentioned in previous interviews, I think it'd be really good to add value to what we already have here. You might remember I even mentioned, we have all this corn, we have all this, this nice water. Why not make whiskey? And I see that recently there's plans to bring in a distillery, right? That's fine. Maybe I can get a job there as a tour guide or sampler. But that's the sort of thing. Also, in a previous interview, I mentioned how, wouldn't it be great if our, if our schools could, could resource local agriculture to feed to the kids? And as we can see today, without the schools feeding the kids, how many children would be hungry? So I think that's two suggestions I've had, that I think we can see that, one, somebody else thinks, hey, it's a pretty good idea, it's going on. The second idea, I think, would be one to be explored. I think we definitely need to look at what we have and add value. West Virginia, for too long, has been extractive. You know, the coal gets dug, it gets shipped down. The trees get cut, they get shipped down. We don't have a lot of furniture. We have some furniture. We have some windows. We have some hardware. But we don't really add value to what we have. And I think that's what we should do as a county, is to look at what we have and have we, and how we can add value to that, and not just sell lots.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
It did, yes, thank you.
The other question, too?
What, and you, you answered that along with the first one, is, you know, how, what would you do to contribute to achieving those goals?
Okay, other commissioners with questions for Mr. Ross?
So, can I ask something?
Hold on.
I can ask.
Let, let Ralph go ahead. I think he had a question for you, Mr. Ross.
All right.
Tim, I guess the question is, and it's a question for everybody here. How do you work on a board? How would you work yourself in, and how would you work with others, let's put it that way?
How would I work with others?
On a board, that you said.
Well, I mentioned before, I'm, I'm a good listener, okay? I'm really an introvert, so generally, you know, I try to listen more than I talk. And and just see, see what the dynamics are in a board and see how I can best fit in. You know, if it starts to wander, maybe I can help bring it back on the, on the track. If some people are dominating it, maybe I can cease that from, from happening. But generally, I see what needs to be done. And if it needs to be leadership, then I step in and lead. If, if the leadership is doing good, and you need a follower, then you step in and do what needs to be done. You know, when I was in the Weather Service, you really had to work as, as a team when you had nasty weather. So your job usually might be one thing, but if something else is going on and you have to take, step into that more, that's what you do. You know, you keep your eye on the prize, and you do what you have to do to get it done. Hope that answers it.
Okay. Caleb or Josh, questions?
No questions.
Okay, I think, Tim, did you say you had a question?
Well, yeah, I noticed the other ones. Ms. Nolan asked them if they were members of JCV. And that question wasn't asked of me. I just want to make sure, did she just neglect me, or I'm under a different set of questions, or?
Yeah, I neglected you. That's all.
Okay, because, you know, JCV doesn't really have members, okay? There's nobody walking around with a JCV card, you know? But I am a vice president of it, and I would say that if, one of the reasons right now we have such a dynamic JCDAs is doing such good work, I think is part of the result of JCV. So I'm very proud to be a, a, a member of the board of that organization. So I just wanted to point that out. And I would say, listening to the other people that have been interviewed, you guys are really good people to choose from. And if you need me, I'd be glad to serve. Ms. Uoz did a great job. And whether you need another older, white, retired guy like me, I don't know. You know, maybe somebody younger with other experience would be better. But anyway, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And if you have no more questions, I guess we're done. Or if you have any questions, all right.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening, Mr. Ross.
You're welcome. Good night.
Yeah. Stephanie, did we ever get in contact with David?
I have not. I have unmuted him. And he, it says he is self-muted. I sent him a message. I did not hear back. I, I mean, I see him on here, but I wish I knew how to pronounce his name better.
Well, I have, I have a, maybe, suggestion. Mr. Gigniliat, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I butchered that name, Gigniliat. It looks to me like he is a resident of Charlestown. So Charlestown needs a representative on the JCDAs with the resignation of Mike Tolbert. So my suggestion to Mr. Gigniliat would be to contact Charlestown and put his name in the, in the hat for consideration. Now, they'll also need to submit us three names. He could be one of those three names. But because he is a resident, based upon what his information said on his, that he sent us. So I, I think probably he would, he should probably apply to Charlestown to be considered for that position as a municipal member.
Okay, I will reach out to him. And I just want to note that Russ also emailed him to try to get him on the line here. But we will reach out to him. We have his contact information and ask him to apply for Charlestown.
Yeah. Well, that, that's a good point, Patsy. I just realized that, looking back at my notes, that he is a residence of the municipality. So we have two municipal slots that are still open, and we need those towns to send us three nominees from each town. So we'll look forward to work, you know, selecting them. But for right now, we're working on the open citizen representative seat. And I'll open the floor for nominations. So there's only one slot.
Commissioner Tabb, I'm gonna butcher this name, but I'll nominate Mr. Kenemuel. This is the hardest group of names I've ever seen in my life. Except for Mr. Ross and Chambers.
Yeah, okay. I'll just call him Dara, but that's, you know, Mr. Dara for abbreviation. Other nominations? I, I want to, go ahead, Ralph.
Well, I was going to nominate Mr. Ross. I've, he has tried to be part of this county, and I think in a good way. And I'm going to nominate him.
All right, and I'm gonna nominate Lorena Chambers. So those are all the folks we have interviewed also, and each of us has one vote. So I will go through the list, and you let me know how you vote. Dara Kenemuel. Who votes for Dara?
Caleb does.
Commissioner Compton?
Caleb and Josh, all right. Tim Ross?
I'll vote for him.
All right, Ralph? And Lorena Chambers. I vote for her.
I vote for her as well. This is Patsy.
Okay. So we have a tie between Dara Kenemuel and Lorena Chambers. So we'll re-vote between those two. So we'll go with Dara Kenemuel, who votes for Dara.
Do we need to have a re-vote, or should we just have Ralph pick?
Go ahead, Ralph.
Put him up. Let's put him in the spot.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna put there, I'm gonna vote for Dara, because I think Patty has his name the best, and I think she can work with him.
Yeah, well, I, I had a conversation with him earlier today, so I learned how to pronounce his name.
Okay.
And I won't hold, and I won't hold the fact that he went to Dartmouth, this one of those Ivy Leagues, but, you know.
Yeah.
I.
Not everyone can go to Virginia Tech, Ralph, so, you know, we're just gonna have to let that go. Yeah. So I will congratulate.
And I, and I want to make clear, I think, all of us do, that Ms. Chambers is a very good candidate, and she should apply at the end later.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yeah, but I think Mr. Ken Mui is also a very good candidate, and I had a hard choice between the two of them. So, but yeah, I think either one of them would be good on the board. And I actually serve on that board. So I look forward to working with the person that, Mr. Kenemui.
All right. Yes, congratulations, Mr. Kenemui. And this is interesting, doing these votes virtually and not being able to see everyone, but we're, we're getting through it, even though it is a little cumbersome at times. All right. I am moving on down to, I'm leaving Nathan for the last.
That makes sense.
List of things, number five. But I want to go back and pick up, well, not go back, go forward even farther to the county administrator reports at the end of our agenda, and the discussion on the 1,000 grant for, $1,000 grant for hero pay. Stephanie, can you explain that?
Sure. So in two separate press conferences, Governor Justice indicated that he would be sending counties a block grant for $100,000. When he talked about those grants, he indicated that they would be for hero pay, which I think to everyone meant some sort of additional pay for frontline responders, our dispatchers, the sheriff's department, and the ESA. We have not received our check yet, though apparently it did go out, and the auditor has created a separate fund that we are to deposit that money in. I do have a copy of basically the form letter. I have a copy of the letter that went to Barbara County Commission. And in that letter, it indicates that we may only spend this money on expenses that would be permissible under the CARES Act. And specifically, under the CARES Act, hazard pay or extra compensation is, is excluded from that. You could pay overtime, which would be overtime that is ordinarily, so you have to, you know, you have to schedule people for more hours because of the COVID-19 response. But the hazard pay that he seemed to indicate that it was for, and I think, I think it was again today, he indicated that it was for that, and it could be for any, you know, frontline person, including grocery store workers. But when you read the letter, and I'm not the only person who has this opinion, I'm following all of the counties, and they're saying the same thing. The executive director of the CCAWV has reached out to the governor to ask for clarification, and also the auditor. The other thing is, is that he has indicated, and the letter indicates, that we're supposed to share this money with municipalities. So, and it gives the county commission the flexibility on how to spend the money, but we also have to account for how we spent the money to the state. So there's still a lot of, I feel, questions surrounding what we can actually use this $100,000 for. Now, if we could use it for expenses that are permissible under the CARES Act, such as PPE, you know, maybe we could switch some of those expenses and then provide the hero, the hazard pay by switching it around. But then, you know, I have municipalities who are saying, well, are we going to get some of this? And I specifically had a municipality mention this on a conference call that we have every day that is chaired by Homeland Security or Emergency Management. So I think the municipalities are going, you know, they feel like they get a piece of the $100,000. And really, $100,000 in terms of our budget and our payroll is not a whole lot. So the advice that. So the advice that the C C A W V was giving this afternoon was to hold on to the money until we got some further clarification from the auditor's office to determine how exactly we could spend this funding. The other thing is, is that we have, we have people in the community because during the press conference, he indicated that we could give it, you know, to daycare provider, I mean, really, anyone who's still working. So, you know, we've had requests coming in from the community thinking that they would also get a piece of, of the pay. So I think that, I think that maybe we ought, we ought to wait. Like I said, we haven't even gotten the check yet. Though I do understand they have been mailed out. But we, maybe we ought to wait. I didn't know if you wanted me to contact the municipalities to see what their needs were. To maybe, you know, so we could even see, you know, if there are expenses that municipalities have that might be that, you know, that we might want to give the money for. I don't, I don't know how you want to do it. Like I said, the, the letter was a surprise to me because it, it looks to me like it's something different than what was discussed during the press conferences. And I think the municipalities are thinking they're gonna get a share of the $100,000.
Well, I, I think that, well, and, and maybe it's gonna have to be clarified, and I know that that's what they're trying to do. But I know that there are some agencies that work on behalf of all of the citizens. For example, emergency services, they work on behalf of all citizens, whether they're municipality or whether they're county residents. And so, you know, I'm not sure how that's all gonna play out, but I think we probably have to find out about that before we make any decisions. But I certainly want to remember, remember those folks too in whatever decisions we make.
Right, well, it sounds like to me, we definitely need clarity from the auditor about how this money can be spent. And I think once we have clarity, then we can contact the municipal representatives and say, this is our understanding of the situation. You know, where do you fit in, or what are, what have your needs been that match this criteria? I mean, I don't know how else to approach it. It seems we're getting mixed messages.
Right. Well, the letter specifically says that it can only be used on expenditures that would be reimbursable under the CARES Act. That would not, that would be overtime. So if we had people who incurred overtime as a result of COVID-19, but that's different than increasing pay, giving double time, time and a half. You know, a certain amount per day, a certain amount per hour. That's different than the actual, than overtime. So I think there may be a disconnect between what is being said in the press conference, versus the letter that we received today. And like I said, I'm not, I think that all of the counties who've been chiming in on this are on the same page that, that it cannot be used to do a hero pay thing. Like I think I told you about Canog County, where they're providing an extra $4 an hour for all of their first responders. As I understand it, it could not be used for that.
Okay. Well, would it be helpful to at least send out the letter that came, that preceded the check? We know the check's supposedly on the way. Send it to the municipalities and explain what your understanding of it is, and that, you know, there's gonna be more discussion in the future to clarify the issues? Just so that they don't think we're ignoring what their needs might be. But we really don't know concrete answers to how to move forward.
Right, and I think that the sheriff thought that, you know, understandably so, that this was gonna be, be able to be used to provide additional compensation for first responders. But again, that was the impression that was given. But I think at the letter, I'm not so sure that that, it could lawfully be used for that.
Yeah, well, I mean, when you call something hero pay, that's, that's, I mean, here, you know, a grant for hero pay, that's what you think it's for, so.
That's what it sound like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would concur with Stephanie's assessment. It's just kind of unclear right now. So I would recommend that, you know, perhaps we do something like what Jane suggested. But, you know, we have to have clarity before we actually do anything with, with the funds.
Right.
I agree. It makes sense.
Yeah. Everybody, okay?
I would want to spend the money, but I, I'm concerned about what type of accountability the county will have. If we give money to the cities, how do we get that accounted for, and et cetera? Because somebody's gonna come back at the end and say, did you spend it right?
Right. And that's also a concern. I mean, that's a uniform concern across counties, large and small. Hey, if we give it to the volunteer fire departments, if we give it to the cities, how do we know, you know, how they spent that funding? Because we are the ones that are responsible for accounting for it. So these are all concerns that the counties are, you know, that they're all putting out there. And I think that the leadership of the C C A W V and W A C O are looking for guidance from the auditor in the Governor's Office about this funding. Because no, of course, no one wants to spend it in a way that isn't permissible or that it, you know, wasn't intended for.
Okay. All right, so is everybody?
Go ahead.
So, I mean, do you feel comfortable with what we've discussed? I don't know, other commissioners comfortable that you at least reach out to the municipalities and tell them what we don't know? What about this money?
I'm fine with that, yeah. I'm fine with that.
I think there's already some rumors going around because today, the municipal representative said, well, I heard that the sheriff is gonna get all of that money.
Yeah.
And I said, it may, the check may physically be made out to the sheriff because he's the treasurer of the county. But the responsibility for providing those funds lies with the County Commission. So I think there's already some rumors. So I think it would be better to be proactive. Contact the city. They give us a list of expenditures that you think might be eligible for this funding. We're not saying that we, you would get it, but we're, we're just trying to, you know, determine if you have expenditures, if we would have money left over to spend.
Yeah. Everybody agreeable with that approach?
Yes.
Yeah, everybody agreeable? I see Caleb shaking his head yes, so I think we've got the votes. That, that works. Okay.
I wanted to discuss with regard to COVID-19. We discussed at our last meeting that we'd asked all departments to delay hiring to, you know, really eliminate any expenditure that isn't really essential right now. Pretty much anything that's not related to COVID-19. I know that the Development Authority is in the process of hiring an executive director. And I think Patty has reached out to me, and so has Lynn Goodwin, who's the interim executive director, as to whether or not the Development Authority should go forward with that hire. The position has been vacant since May 12th of last year. And the Development Authority did hire a consultant, and I believe that they've paid that consultant to conduct the search. So if they don't hire now, you know, they might lose all the work of that consultant. The salary that they were requesting is an increase beyond what they were paying that position. So I guess I'm looking for some direction for the County Commission because that position is on our payroll. As to whether or not, and you're gonna have to approve it when they come before you, when they finally do select a candidate, should they go forward with those interviews? And, you know, the, the reason that I feel like maybe they should is because they paid a consultant a fee to do a search for a director.
Yes, we have, and actually, we have, we have a couple of interviews coming up next week, the, with the, some of the, a couple of the finalists. And so some direction would be helpful. You know, we've, it, we've been in this process now for, I guess, two months, maybe a little bit longer than that. And so this is certainly something that's been unforeseen, but I'm hoping that we don't want to, we don't want to lose what we've worked so hard to achieve at this point.
And that position has been vacant for a while. So what we asked the department managers is to delay at least six months, and it's already been vacant more than six months, almost a year.
Yeah.
So.
I.
That is.
I, I'm, I'm agreeing that they should at least move forward with the interviews. And, and, you know, if they make their final selection, then it's gonna have to come down to some really tough negotiating as far as salary. You know, we're all in a difficult position as far as knowing what our revenues are. But, and that's more for the, you know, I know that's a board decision, but I do think it's, you know, you can have really good people to interview, but if you don't take action, you can lose, they won't be available too. Sometimes they'll move on, or they'll have other opportunities that come up. So I think it's, would actually, you know, be wasteful of the work that's been done if you do find a good candidate to move forward. How do other commissioners feel?
I, I agree. We've paid a consultant. You need to move forward. I don't know how you're gonna go about doing it, virtual interviews or what?
Yes, we've been doing virtual interviews, and that's how we'll do the next, the next round.
It's gonna be awkward when we're all next to each other again in person. I don't know if I'll be able to handle that.
We may continue social distancing forever.
Well, I think that, that, that may be a problem because until travel restrictions are lifted, you know, offering a hire to somebody that doesn't even know what they get here is a problem. I, I think they can go ahead with the interviews, but I, you know, the actual employment date may be a question.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure there'll be lots of details to work out if they find somebody that's willing to accept the position. You know, there's always timing issues if there's a move involved. Maybe there's not a move involved. I don't know any of the applicants. So, you know, it'll, and sometimes there's a time lag from when they're available. They, you know, may be currently in their job, and when you offer them this other position, so.
Yeah, and that's, we've been, we've been struggling with that. So, but, yeah, so, so we're hoping we can, we can move forward so that we don't have to go through all this process again.
And one of those temporary signs on the road said, "Do not enter West Virginia by order of the Governor." I mean.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe one of them will become a West Virginian. So I don't know if it counts in that case or not.
I'm reviewing the agenda, and I believe we've accomplished everything but all the, but all the items under number five. So Nathan is, are there items here that you can do publicly? Or what, what needs to be taken care of tonight?
Yes, because of the lateness of the hour and just other reasons, I am gonna skip everything except for the last item, which is a review and report on aspects of county policies regarding, other things regarding the C-19 crisis. I have a couple of issues that I believe we should consider an executive session for you to receive legal advice that could potentially raise some issues of liability or other matters of legal advice. And one of those would be issues regarding dispatch of first responders during this crisis. And by that, I don't mean to imply that the 911 center has been doing anything wrong or anything like that. But there are just some issues that, that I need to discuss with you that could relate to potential liability issues or other things that you need to have legal advice on. And also, I would like to give you some legal advice regarding the policy issues that are, have been raised by a new hot-off-the-press regulation that has been promulgated by the state, 64 C S R 114, relating to some, the application of some rules to businesses. And I believe that I need to, to also give you some legal advice about that. So I would suggest that we move into executive session. I do not know if at the end of executive session, there will be any movement by the commission or not. So, you know, I can't, I can't say that. That would be up to you.
Okay, and if it is, and if we do decide to move into executive session, Stephanie, can you describe the process so the public knows what's going on?
Sure. So what we're gonna try to do is we're, we would go into another meeting that only we have the information for. We're not sure if we can come back here. But we're gonna try to come back to this meeting. So I think Russ had hoped that it would be able to show that the County Commission was in executive session, that we would put something up on the screen in this meeting, and then we would go over to our other meeting. But he has shared with me that he does have a concern as to whether or not the meeting, this one will close when he starts the other executive session meeting. So, but we're going to try to come back to this meeting to take action.
Okay, if, if there's any action required, yes, we will try to.
Yeah, I would, you know, say there may not be any action required, but.
Okay.
So I guess if you all don't mind, what I was going to do is when you go into executive session, if this kills that other meeting, I've already set up a second meeting that Sandy McDonald would put out on the alerts and put out on Facebook, and you would each get an email in relation to that too, to come back to the second meeting if you need to.
Okay, well, first step in all of this is I'm making the motion that we go into executive session to receive legal counsel concerning, concerning issues, among them, dispatch and Regulation 64 C S R.
Second.
All right, so we moved and seconded, go into executive session for legal counsel. There's any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So I'm gonna close down my meeting here. We'll do our phone-in number right on our telephones. And I'm going to take a short break, and I'm sure you all will too, and we'll get hooked back up by telephone. Thanks.
So, okay.
You can, you can call in, or you can use the link that was sent to you. They both will work.
Nathan, if you can hear me, did you get the info for the executive session? I can't hear you, Nathan, which is good. Now I hear you.
I'm in the meeting, in the web meeting.
You're in this meeting, but did you go ahead and sign into the executive session?
I did, but somehow it told me I couldn't have two meetings at once, and then I thought that.
Exactly, close, yeah, close this meeting. Yeah, close this meeting and go into the other meeting.
Gotcha.
And then come back to this one. Yes, but I'm not in the executive session, so I don't know if that's running.
Okay. I'm back, but I came back as an attendee because I hit the wrong link, but I'm here.
I heard you. I got you. I unmuted you.
I see that.
I restarted the recording and everything is there, so I think the only question. Ralph.
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Okay. I don't have any visual for some reason, but I think I'm on. Is everybody back on?
Yes, I am. This is Patsy.
Okay.
I'm here, Josh.
All right. Caleb?
Yeah.
And Ralph? I don't think we have Ralph on here. We have Stephanie.
It's Nathan. I'm on here.
Okay.
I don't see Ralph in the list.
Yes, I don't see Ralph and I can't hear him or find anything with him, so I think he needs to call back in.
Is Stephanie on here?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got everyone but Ralph?
Yes.
All right. Give him two more minutes and then we'll we'll wind up here.
Ralph had some trouble before.
All right. Well, and I had trouble this last, you know, all I have is audio. I don't have anything visual, so I don't know what I did.
We can see you.
I can see you, Jamie.
Okay, I can't see myself, but that's no big loss, so. Oh my.
I texted Ralph.
Okay.
He said he can hear, but somehow he's muted.
Okay. Well, this is not ideal, but should we go ahead and then he can let you know by text, I guess, his vote, Stephanie?
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have one motion that we need to make as, well, let's have a motion to come out of executive session. I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Okay, spin move. Do you second it? You come out of executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think we've got a majority there.
And Ralph also said that he agrees.
Okay, that's good. Well, I'm, as a result of the executive session discussions, I'm going to make a motion that we direct Nathan Cochrane to contact all first responder departments to make them aware of HIPAA regulations.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Ralph also says aye. He agrees.
Okay. So that sounds like it's unanimous, so that motion passes. Is there any other? Okay.
Second.
All right, I think it's unanimous. We adjourn. All right. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie, Nathan.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
And Russ.
Oh, and Russ. Yeah, you're there too. That's Andy.
Right.
Good night, everybody.
Nobody ever notices the sound guy until something goes bad.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
I can't get out of it now.